I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Abbot Seagull. Roque.
Karlovic, Kramer, Rechner, Reese, Easter.
All right, this time we'll go State Shrek's Step Four.
Ah, this is Mayor Council. Tonight, I brought the students with me that painted the sign that was out by the Hamilton Ball Field that's been hanging there since the early 1990s. It was like really fading, it was really in bad shape. I took pictures, brought them in to Terry, said, "What do you think, can you even get this repainted?" And so I talked to several of the council members, and they said, "Sure, if you can get somebody to do the work." So, me and I went down and saw Ms. Howard. I said, "Ms. Howard, could we paint the sign?" She said, "If you get me to paint the sign, we'll paint it." I said, "Okay." So then, I went and made arrangements, get the sign to her. And she got these two ladies to take care of the sign and to design it and paint it. And the two ladies are here tonight. Kurt, I believe you have a little something you'd like to read.
Um, so, just going off way, he said, "Our Chicole High School art teacher, Mrs. Ingrid Howard, graciously allowed our students Ashley Workman and Madison Moody to design and paint our We're Proud Sunbury Sign, located on Route 61 near the Hamilton Field entering the city of Sunbury. Their actions have helped to make Sunbury a better place to visit and live. On behalf of Sunbury City Council and the city of Sunbury, I award these students with certificate of appreciation and thank them for such a great job done."
There you go, girl, appreciate it.
And you two don't have to stay for the rest of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Now, this time I have a quick announcement. I take this very seriously. I have received a threat of violence against one of our city departments, and I want the public to be aware and understand that any form of threat of violence against any city or Sunbury entity or employees will be taken seriously with zero tolerance from myself, and the police department will be notified and the matter will be looked into. At this time, I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2018 and July 23rd, 2018, and the reports of the fire department, police department, engineer, code office, and planning commission.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Are there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? Please stand.
Am I the other one?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Regina Russell, community activist. I'm a little confused. I don't know if everybody else knows what change non-uniform STP slash LTP insurance I'm going to assume that's short-term disability and long-term disability. And my question would be, how does it fall under your department?
That fell under team to the office, and I was asked to look over it because that's what I did. So, it was just a comparing coverage, just there.
And you'll explain that to us tonight?
Yep. Yeah.
Any other audience comment on agenda items only? All right. And if you look at the agenda, we're going to table the civil service regulations 4.1 change under recommendation from our officer in charge at this time. All right, with Ockman's treasure true, I understand that the issue of unpaid engineering invoices have been taken care of. Is that correct, Councilman?
That's correct.
All right, we're gonna table the unpaid engineering invoices as well. All right, Councilman Easter, Chestnut Street paving bid process.
Uh, we've faced through Chestnut Street. Project has started. Of course, it's a rainy day today, and we're starting on the south side, starting at 3:15. It's history and that, I'm sure it doesn't go back to the dawn of war. On the paving on Chestnut Street, it was delayed a week or two. The, uh... Our memo review was, started a little late because the timeframe of five years ran out, but it is being taken care of through C2. And we should be back on schedule for October 5th.
Councilman Reese, the change to non-uniform.
So, there was a request sent to the mayor's office, and the mayor had all the paperwork that was sent to him. There was a company that was looking, it currently does our health insurance, Benetton, was trying to compete with our short-term, long-term disability. They sent over a quote. We currently have MetLife for that carrier, for that insurance. And the new insurance that they were providing was called One America. The coverages, when I reviewed, was that the coverages were at least the same, if not better. And it actually was determined that the coverages would be a little bit better with the new carrier. It would help our employees that are a little bit older be able to retain insurance a little bit longer. And it saves us $2,204.16 a year. So, I mean, it's the same plan, if not a little bit better, and they're saving. So, I can answer any questions, but I'll make a motion that we change to the One America through the PMH RC, Benetton.
Before you move. No. You don't work for either of those companies.
No, no.
Your company has nothing to do with any of that.
Nothing at all. Only safe font, that's all I...
Just wanted to bet on the record.
Yeah, has nothing to do with anything.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Regina Russell, a lot of times, and I don't know if you know this, you probably do. A lot of times, well, the first year is low, and then the second year and thereafter, the fee will go up.
There would be, it would be listed in there, the first-year discount, some kind of new customer discount, something like that. There wasn't any of that in the policy that they sent over.
Okay.
Yep. You mean our health insurance? No, there's nothing.
Ready? Kramer?
I'd like to make a motion that we...
Oh, that's already done.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just say yes or no.
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Councilman Rechner, the Hart approval?
We've had a determination by Hart sent over to us to recommend their decision to allow the gentleman of 208 Chestnut Street, he's replacing four windows on his home with the same type of window. So, I would make a motion that we accept Hart's decision and allow the gentleman to go ahead and replace his windows on Chestnut Street.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kramer, if we will pay invoices?
I'd like to make a motion that we pay our accounts payable of $160,425.25 and the liquid fuel of $4,847.35.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Pax, if you'd some Mary's, please, Councilman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we exonerate the people that own the address. There is, um... Not too many this time. They're either deceased or on SSI, or they got two foot tempels. So, I'd like to make a motion to exonerate those people.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
All right, um, at this time, I have received notice from our officer, Michael Lottens, defiling our officer, our offer of full-time employment. He's requested to wait and apply for the position after it has been advertised, and then he will apply to complete the civil service test. At this time, he will continue his part-time position within the Sunbury Police Department. All right, so, sorry, I don't wanna... I have received the official retirement notice from our city clerk, Terry Speck. With deep regret and with even more excitement, I am writing to let you know, effective January 31st, 2019, I will be resigning and retiring from my position as city clerk for the city of Sunbury. I have enjoyed my almost 24 years working for the citizens of the city of Sunbury. I have grown in my responsibilities, and I appreciate the respect that allowed me to do that from all present and former mayors and council members. Thank you in advice and advance. I'm sure this will be a smooth transition. Sincerely, Terry Speck. Also, I make a motion to accept this retirement.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
It was a good 24 years, Terry.
It's a must. Yes, it is.
I have received a resignation letter from our administrative assistant, Cheryl Delsite. Dear Mayor Kurt, please consider this my letter of resignation. I have accepted a position that will be a great opportunity for me. My leaving has nothing to do with you. After getting over some nervousness because of rumors at the beginning, I have enjoyed working with you and wish you the best of luck for the remainder of your term. My last day working for the city of Sunbury will be August 28th, 2018. I am willing to work on grants and other projects in the evenings and weekends until someone is hired and trained. Sincerely, Cheryl Delsite. I would like to express my wholehearted thanks for all the great work that Terry Speck and Cheryl Delsite has done and will continue to do during the remainder of their employment for the city of Sunbury. Terry will have provided 24 years of service by the time of her retirement, and Cheryl has provided 22 years of service to our city. As a mayor and on behalf of the city of Sunbury, it is with great honor to recognize these two employees for their dedication and loyalty for over two decades to the citizens of Sunbury. Thank you, Terry and Cheryl, for doing your jobs and for truly helping to take care of our city for so many years. We have sent off the advertisement for both positions, and we will begin accepting applications for the positions. Announcements, applications will be accepted until 4:00 PM, August 22nd, to test for the police civil service list for hire with the Sunbury Police Department. Applications are available at www.sunburypa.org or at a city clerk's office. Also, Valley's Got Talent is Thursday, August 16th at the Chicole High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. The River Festival, Friday and Saturday, August 17th and 18th on Market Street. Cardboard boar regatta at Riverfront on Saturday at 3:00 PM. Music in the park for August from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM is August 14th Odyssey, August 21st Galactica Sale, and August 28th is Blue River Scoop, which was rescheduled from July 17th. Is there any audience comment at this time?
Mr. Shrek, do you want to make an announcement, Charlie?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The boar regatta, he just announced what?
Uh, the cardboard boar regatta probably will get called off. We're looking for an alternate location. Uh, we were thinking, while they're discussing, actually, they're having their meeting right now as we're here. Uh, because of the river and the swiftness of it and the height, it's definitely not gonna be back down by Saturday. So, we are looking at other options. Maybe the Sunbury Community Pool is an option we're possibly looking at. But right now, I would think probably we'd have to say it's probably not gonna happen. But everything else is gonna happen, rain or shine. Let's pray for shine. But we were just out marking all the spots in the street, so we should be good.
Please stand first at the podium.
Um, yes. Councilwoman Kramer, can we please know the amount of the taxes you are exonerating?
That's not necessarily anything anyone needs to know, but I'll see that you get it.
Well, it was voted on, that's why I asked.
I know, but it's just a bunch of people that are disabled or hurt or whatever.
And when you report it to the public, I think that it should be mentioned, have to be amount. Um, I'd like to just ask Councilman Rechner if he can handle something, please. I had brought this up a couple of years ago about the fire company that's on Penn and I believe Second, and where they have the cornerway.
Yes.
And they still have a lot of trash there, and with that new ordinance that you have, that if anybody has a dump site or their backyard looks like it's a dump area, the police would handle it because that's what Chief Miller said.
Yeah, I, I talked to Eric this morning, actually, no, I told Eric on Friday, and told him about that corner there, the weeds are high and stuff, and...
And the trash, too, so...
Well, I go along with the side, I go by and see the wagon there, the trailer there, and...
Yes.
The signs there and stuff, and we have to go over, I think it's just a hour, to find out. The trailer's not theirs, that's the other thing we gotta figure out, why that's there, if it's legal to be there or not.
And my concern is because there are children that put it there. Thank you very much.
Is there any other audience comment?
I do.
Please stand first at the podium.
Gina, $42.00.
Thank you, that's a lot of money.
So, that goes for Hitler's...
What has she done every month?
My name's Bill Staley, I live on Rice Street, Sunbury, 13 years. I'm not very good at this, but... In the 13 years I've lived on Rice Street, we made a lot of improvements from property, trying to make it a decent place, although, you guys aren't helping them call. How many codes has been that... Here, here the list, 208, 210, 212, 14, Speech Street. 338, South Street, I'm beyond with that with the only. 324 and 326. I could move in front of Allenwood and have a nicer looking place than I got now. I would peel... I mean, I don't know what control landlords have over here. But, they got something. It just never ended. They were there again last night, the police. And that was a nasty incident. Punk driver spinning his tires, riding around the block. If they couldn't arrest them, they could tell the police got there, it was over and he was out of cars. I'm just sick of it. I've seen child... Just hard for me. I've seen child abuse at the worst. I've seen murder. I've seen people laying dead on our street. One in the parking lot, the kids said, "Hey, there's a guy laying dead on the railroad track." That was last summer. There's overducks around the corner from me the other night again. There's kids living in that house. And we're tired. I vote for you. Hoping that there could be some changes, and there's none. You're interested in the dog parts, when I just told you about all this other stuff? That don't fly with me. My problem is, I don't have enough people in my block because they're all rental properties. I don't have anybody to come to them. I don't come at myself, and I'm not giving up until it's straight.
You did good.
Step four, mention name.
Yeah, my name's Richard Stoll Jr., I live down on Screw Street. Been pretty close with Jimmy Iser. I approached him, and I don't know if he made it, but I've been there for 25 years, and over the 25 years that I've been there, I've noticed more and more, I don't know what the law is, people feeding stray cats. We must have about 30 stray cats in the back of our yard, and our house is fixed up pretty decent, and we can't enjoy our backyard because it smells like cat urine. I don't know, and I know the two people that are feeding them, but that's all they do, they just let them run. I called the SPCA to see what I could do. They said that you capture them, you bring them to us, and then, but I feel, why should I take money out of my pocket just to get rid of them? I mean, I feel the people that feed them, they should be reliable or be fined or do whatever they got because they come right up to them like they're their own. Soon as I try to capture one, can't get them because they're not friendly, they're stray. And I wanna enjoy our backyard. And it's like, my grandkids come down, they wanna play in there because it smells like cat urine all the time. So, I don't know what we can do about it, or if there's an ordinance to get it taking place, but, um... I'm gonna be like this gentleman that was just up there, I'm gonna be here until it's done, I mean, because I wanna enjoy it. I didn't buy the house, and I don't wanna move because of a couple pets, you know? So, if we can do something, I'm glad they helped. But, I mean, Jimmy sees them, they run all over the town in this that little area. But, I don't know what else to say to get them out of there.
Could I respond to that?
No, hold on.
I mean, he, he even has a, he bought a steel shed just to let them go in. I mean, he has a door open and asks where they live. I mean, it's just, needs to be taken care of by people, so...
They're kind of that address, I don't know the other one.
It's the two, it's, uh... I'm not quite sure, I know it's Bill and Russ.
Yeah.
They did the second house in, but it's the one right on the alleyway that they just paid in the back of our house, Jimmy. She's an older lady, he's a bigger sick guy. I can't remember their names.
I said they're feeding also.
They feed them also, yeah. So, I mean, if we can do something, that'd be great, you know? It's not that I wanna see them killed. Maybe somebody can bring them around to be a family cat, so, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
How you doing, City Council? Eric Lowidge, my name's Eldridge Valto, 269 North 12th Street. Been there 20-plus years. I'm bringing up an issue that was brought up last year when the code office, Mr. Rechner's head of the code office, they sent letters to all these neighbors about sidewalks being pushed up from roots of trees. Nothing was done, I mean, the neighbor at 275 North 12th, they fixed their sidewalks. The problem is, the tree's been neglected for the past 15 years, never been trowned, never pruned. There's branches falling out. It's a hazard for people walking on the sidewalk. The tree is 100 feet plus tall, and if a tornado or anything knocks that tree out, you're gonna have some casualties. It's that big. The tree needs to go. The code officers... What I don't understand is how, it seems to me like people who don't have money, they may cut trees down, but people who have the means to cut that tree down, wouldn't even put a dent in this guy's pocket, doesn't have to cut his tree down. The city spent manpower last year, they had to dig up the street in front of my house. They land between the curb and my sidewalk, they fix a brick from the sewer line because of that tree roots. As tall as those trees are, that's how long the roots grow. Okay, when they had that thing open, it was another world on there. You're talking anaconda snake roots. I mean, that big, I was amazed, I couldn't believe it. I'm constantly spending money for this darn thing. Why should I put a 90-foot drain in because the tree roots broke all my underground gutter spouts? So, how can the city pick and choose who they make do stuff? Repair curbs, cut trees down, take out stumps, and this guy, they make him do nothing? Not even maintain the tree, I mean, it's a safety hazard. The tree's not even maintained. I mean, if you'll come up there, Mayor, and take a look at that tree, man, the trunk is on the curb. My wife almost broke her ankle trying to get out the damn car. She can't even park in the spot, she's gotta park above the spot, and then you got the neighbor crying, "Why are you over the line?" Well, get your tree out of the way, cut the trunk off the darn curb so she can get out of the damn car. So, I wanna know what's the, why are they picking and choosing who they may do what? It should be fair for all the citizens.
Where is the tree? Is it between the curb and the sidewalk, or is it on...
Between the curb and the sidewalk. And the trunk is on top of the curb, cracking the curb.
Is this different? I remember last year you came about someone had paved in their sidewalk and it was going into your property. Is this different?
The same issue.
Same issue.
Same issue. They did the sidewalks.
Sidewalks were fixed the right way, right?
Yes.
But the trees don't?
They did have, but the tree is not gone. I mean, you're talking three big trees at 100 feet plus tall.
Sir, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you give the address again? I don't give you gentlemen's...
275 North 12th Street is it, which, he owns the trees, or the city, I don't know who owns it, either the city or he does.
Well, that's the question I was gonna ask next. If it's between the sidewalk and the curb, I can't tell you off the top of my head, it's a right-of-way issue, and I think probably we may be able to deal with it, but I can't tell you that without looking at a board. I mean, to be honest with you.
Sure.
Um, the other thing is, I know there are, because I've dealt with it in the past, there's lots of laws dealing with trees and tree branches and things extending over into your neighbor's property, and I know that the basic premise is the landlord can deal with it and it's coming onto their property. So, for example, if there's a limb on a tree that's overhanging to your garage and it looks like it's gonna fall down and your neighbor won't move it, you can remove it, okay? And I'm not telling you to do that or do self-help or anything like that, I'm just explaining to you what the law is. I think it's a relevant complaint, I just, if you would, give me until the next meeting or at least until next week, do a little research on the problem because I think it might be a right-of-way issue that we can probably solve for.
Okay. Beautiful.
Actually, I'm, sir, what, I got your name, Eldridge Valto?
Yes, I live next door.
Can I have your phone number?
Yes, 570-274-1384. Property owner is Donald Eckroyd. He doesn't even live there.
Is the home vacant?
No, 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 his mother-in-law and brother-in-law live there. But Jerry does nothing. I'm also dealing with an issue, I don't even wanna deal with the issue in my backyard with the poison coming all over the place. I mean, I told Jerry a thousand times, can you get somebody, get your poison off my fence? I mean, it's just coming all in my yard. I mean, that's something I can just knock down with a rake. Tree is the problem, man. I'm putting root kill, you know, I'm still spending money, 90-foot drain, I mean, French drain. I gotta put root kill in there to make sure these roots are staying out of my sewer line. I mean, it's just ridiculous, man. And I'm gonna go back to Mr. Bill Ginn, man, dying on his deathbed, spent a thousand dollars to get his tree cut down because he got the same letter that Eckroyd got. The code was not enforced, they're not even making a man maintain the tree. You know, if you go down and take a look, Mr. Mayor, you can see everything I'm talking about.
Do you know, did Miss, I'm not gonna say the guy's name in the paper here, but the gentleman you're speaking of, did he receive a letter from the code?
Yes.
He did?
Yes.
Okay. We'll take a look at it for you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Please stand.
Please stand.
About Beverlyworth Center? Last week, I'm not sure what the city sprays on weeds to get rid of that, is it poison? Toxic?
I'm not working on drinking it, that's what you're asking.
No, I'm not asking that, I'm just curious what the city uses to kill the weeds? When they spray.
Chris's employees and also some of my employees take courses, we're only allowed to spray certain types of pesticides on the grasses and the weeds, there are different ones for different locations.
I'm asking because I was driving past the playground, I guess it's Goodwill's Playground, and they were spraying all around it, and children play there, so I was just curious to see what it was that they used.
There were certain pesticides we would spray in those areas.
And just so you know, Goodwill's Playground is privately owned by the Goodwill Company, that isn't a city property.
It was actually on the outside of the playground.
You might have sprayed it.
It was a city property.
But they would know what they can, I mean...
Okay, I was just curious because I was concerned why they would be spraying herbicide on where children play. Plus, I live at the top of Line Street Hill, right across from the weapons, and it was sprayed along there also. I use no chemicals on my property, so I really don't want chemicals that are way to spray up onto my property either. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, please stand up to the audience.
I'd like to respond to the gentleman here that was speaking of the cat issue. That is in most communities. It's not the issue of a cat wanting to run wild, it's irresponsible pet owners that owe the kitty's cue, but now it's bigger, let's kick it to the curb, and so that it's out in the community. I know that P A Pets has done crap, really maneuver and release into the community. These felines do keep down the rodent popularity, yeah, popularity. Population. They would be a good place to start.
In that case, we need more of them.
Sorry?
Said in that case, we need more of them.
Well, the Porticus School was doing a program, and I don't think that they were assisted by anyone here. Law counsel at the time, when they were doing that, and they got quite, quite a few in the ward, for example, you know that? And um, the gentleman that was speaking about the issues over around Race Street, Mayor Karlovic probably appreciates the fact that you did vote for him, but have you read the paper lately? There's no assistance here, it's always calamity, so it's not necessarily his fault, he's trying to do his best, but I hear you, because it's throughout the community. And I guess now we know why Steve Ozio was not asked to stay on, because he was harassed in December. When you're on your own time, your job does not harass you. Thank you.
Again, it's Richard Stall Jr., is there an ordinance on a property owner that has grasses or a certain height that before has to be cut? Because I have a neighbor that has a grass.
We were down there.
Did you down there, you know where I mean, right on the corner by the church?
No, no, we were down by half a thousand minutes.
Okay, because it's, it's like that every week until we say something, and I didn't wanna say anything to him, but I said it's not taken care of. You know.
Any other comments? The next city council meeting is August twenty-seventh, at six fifty one P M in this room. Real quick, I just want y'all to realize that this, the community wetland project that I've been working on is not a priority. The entire city assembly is a priority to myself, and the wetland project, the grants that have been applied for cannot be used for anything else which this project does fit the criteria for. Um, with that, thank y'all for coming out tonight. Maybe it's now turn.